I now call the East Line Zoning Commission regular meeting of June 15, 2023 to order at 7:30 PM. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call here, Debbie, or Ms. Jen Harris?
Here.
Mr. Beck?
Yeah.
Mr. Manning is supposed to be coming, but we'll wait and see. Mr. Schnett?
Here.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Here.
Ms. Markovitz? Mr. Mahollen?
Yes.
Ms. Bang? And Ms. Hardy is, I believe, is not here tonight. So for, Mr. Granitette could not make it, so if Ms. Markovitz wouldn't mind sitting for him? And if Mr. Ginsburg wouldn't mind sitting until Mr. Manning arrives? Thank you. First, we have public delegation. Public delegation is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission on subject matters that are not on the agenda. Is anyone here tonight to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda? Yes, ma'am? If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record?
I'm Nancy Colau, 80 Gressi Hill Road.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here tonight about easements.
Excuse me, could you please put your mic down so we can hear?
Thank you. I had occasion to go visit a friend in Darrow's Ridge, and I noticed that the fire access is not there. There's a house there. So the fire access just kind of went away, and that fire access was pivotal to that development's being established. So it seems to me that, I tried looking through the regulations, and perhaps you can find clarity, but I couldn't figure out if there are any regulations that talk about easements. The easement that was granted is open from Upper Kensington side, and it's, I'm guessing, a mile, might be three quarters of a mile. It's a heavy hike to get to the back of Darrow's Ridge, and you have to go over the Goodwin Trail to get there. I walked it, and it is not now, nor was it ever, a reasonable road to get a fire truck up and down. Actually, if you could get the fire truck or a big truck up, you have to back all the way back down. That's really not fire protection for anybody. It's not wide enough, it's full of ruts, it's full of ledge that'll tear the undercarriage of a fire engine out. Actually, if you don't have a lifted F-350, you're not getting up there. But the kids, the kids are loving it. The neighbors say there's gangs of 20, 30 kids roaming on their ATVs and mountain bikes, having a lovely time back there. So much so that I got lost coming back. There are so many paths. So if there's a fire, not only can they not get back, they need directions. So that got me thinking about, now we have this almost inaccessible fire easement. Who is liable in case of a fire? Is it the developer that put the easement through? Is it the guy that owns the land the easement is on? Is it the town because they let it happen? I just raised that question. And then the maintenance. If this is a fire easement for fire protection, who is supposed to take care of it? Because it is very clearly not maintained. In, we have very apparent global warming. The soils, despite all our rain, are bone dry. All it's going to take is a spark, and a forest fire could be catastrophic. Look at the fires in Canada. Let's take a lesson from those. That's in our recent memory. Easements seem to me to be a gift to the developer, because it allows them to build on land that they have a problem with, so they have to borrow land from somebody else. Let me say it again. Easements allow building on land that is not suitable or appropriate. From my point of view, a fire access road should be at least two ways wide, and it should be large enough that a fire truck can turn around it at the end if there's no egress. Ideally, it should be paved to the town's road specifications. It should be well-maintained, and it should have fire, snow plowing for the winter, because fires happen all the time. Then I started to be thinking about penalties. And I'm sure the lawyers can tell you what's allowable by law, but I thought a million dollars per occurrence into the town treasury would go a long way to take off our taxes. Particularly since when you build houses, it costs more to educate and maintain. The cost of services is like a dollar fifty-three, as opposed to the seventy-six cents for open space. In conclusion, easements are not solutions to problems. They are problematic in themselves, and I ask you to grant, to please ease up on granting easements.
Thank you for your comments.
Here's my forums. That's the front page of the days, because I took these Tuesday morning.
Can we keep these? Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak at the public delegation tonight? Going once, going twice? Okay, in that case, we'll move on to public hearing, which we have none, actually. So we'll move on to the regular meeting, and I believe the first item is to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Does everyone need a few minutes to look at them, or have you read them?
I've read them. I would move approval.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I thought that it was stated, that Attorney Garrity had stated that the applicant for Kristen Clark was that she lives in New Hampshire, but I thought it was stated that she lives in Connecticut?
She lived in New Hampshire, and still works down here, is what I understood. She lives in Boulder, New Hampshire, I believe.
Oh, okay. Because I thought it said she lived, I thought he said she lived in Manchester, Connecticut, and worked in Manchester, Connecticut, but here it says New Hampshire, so I just wasn't sure about that. It's the only question I had.
I just have a really small grammatical fix under call to order. Mr. Ginsburg was seated. Oh, it says we're seated, but. Anything else? So are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Minutes approved? Next, we have the CAM CAM application of Marker 7 Marina, 111 Main Street, Niantic, Assessor's Map, 12.1, Lot 56. Do we have someone here to make a presentation?
You do. My name is Tom Landrigan. Good evening.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Landrigan. My client is here with me, Timothy Landrigan, and as co-counsel is Attorney Jeff Landrigan. So we're here representing Marker 7, Tim Landrigan's project. We've submitted to you what is an undated letter entitled "For Settlement Purposes Only: Application for CAM and Site Plan Review." I trust that you have all received it, and we ask that it be considered part of the form application for East Line. We also submitted a one-page amendment simply trying to incorporate that letter for settlement purposes only and your form, application for coastal area management site plan, as one complete document, okay? As you know, from the letter, I believe, your attorney has submitted to you, there are three lawsuits pending involving this property. And I'd like to thank the town and the town officials for suggesting a way to resolve these lawsuits by filing a site plan with the commission. They wanted a site plan filed before this commission. I suppose to begin, I want to tell you that these lawsuits did not arise because Tim Landrigan simply ignored your regulations, said, "I don't care what they say. I'm doing what I want to do." That's not what Tim Landrigan is all about, and that's not what happened here. There were good faith disagreements about the interpretation of your regulations, about compliance with your regulations, and the enforcement of your regulations. So let me tell you how we got here. It was 2015. Tim Landrigan has an oyster business. After college, he went over to Long Island, worked in an oyster business there, came to Niantic and started an oyster business. His cages, with the approval of DEP, are out in the Niantic Bay. He had a commercial vessel tied up to piles in the Niantic River. And that's where he had what is called a tumbler, a tumbler. And that is, we maintain, farm equipment that turns the oyster during the growing period and before they are harvested for market. The oysters grow in a cage. They have to be tumbled periodically. The oyster in its shell is taken out, the cage, tumbled, and either put back in the cage or shipped to market. Nothing else is done, other than the tumbling of the oyster. And for two years, the tumbler was in the Niantic River on these piles, and for a year and a half, it was at Marker 7 Marina in a slip on a shellplex, a commercial vessel. No action was taken against him during this time period by the town. In 2019, the beginning of 2019, Tim obtained a long-term lease for the entire marina, all the slips, the grounds, all the piers. And that was in the beginning of 2019, and it was where, obviously, he had his commercial vessel and his shellplex, and it was the dock where he had been tumbling all these years. In October of 2019, about 10 months after he took over a long-term lease of this facility, he got a cease and desist order from the town about the tumbler processing on this commercial vehicle. An appeal was made to the ZBA, and while we got a 3-2 vote in our favor, we lost, because the ZBA requires four, four out of five votes. So there is an appeal pending in the Superior Court. That's lawsuit number one. Then Tim obtained permission from DEEP to repair his bulkhead, repair it, not build it, just repair it, at the marina. And in that process, dredge materials, de-water the soils in place for spreading on his property, not to be taken off, not to be sold, de-watering on his property. And we got all those permits from DEEP, and DEEP also permitted the existing dock on the east side of the property to be expanded from three to five, two extra births. And that was approved by DEEP. This brought an injunction, action from the town, which is pending in Superior Court. That's lawsuit number two. In defending lawsuit number two, we found other evidence of DEEP approvals for projects in town that seemed very similar to what Tim was doing. That did not result in injunction against those properties, did not have site plan approval by any commission. So that was lawsuit number three, and that's pending in federal court, basically for unequal treatment. So I'd like to tell you just what our arguments were. So you fully understand. Let's give one to, the original to the secretary. And again, I'm going to refer to these. I'm going to give you a page number. If you want to look at the page number, fine. If you don't want to look at the page number, you don't have to, because I'm going to be telling you about it. Give Tim one.
I did. Exhibit A. Yes, yes.
Might get Exhibit A if you want.
Yeah, I did.
Just one, one exhibit, not all of them. All right. And so I want to tell you about our side of the story, because this was a good faith dispute about the interpretation and the enforcement of these right regulations. So about the cease and desist order that we got, you're processing this tumbler at the dock. Well, our argument number one is that the birthing of the plaintiff's shellplex at the marina is, in fact, a permitted right under the zoning regulations, and on page 20 that I gave you, we have your Section 10, 10.1, permitted uses, 10.19, birthing facilities for vessels engaged in commercial fishery or shellfishery, but expressly excluding fish or shellfish processing plants, not just processing, processing plants. And we said, having a tumbler on this shellplex that simply tumbles this oyster is not a processing plant. Furthermore, this dock, we believe, was one of the first docks in the town of East Line. I think it was historically a commercial dock in town, and therefore, any commercial use, similar to what was there prior to zoning, is pre-existing, non-conforming. So our position was that the vessel are permitted by right. This is a commercial dock for commercial boats that existed long before zoning. Our argument number two, that the shellplex is exempt under site plans exemptions. If you go to page 12, we have your regulations 24.1. 24.1 says activities for which a site plan is required, and then you have 24.1.1, site plan exemptions. The following shall be exempt from permit review, only require a business registration form, which is any use which is permitted as a right, where there is no change in the building dimensions, and which does not result in an intensification, and it cites further on. This use is permitted by right. We can have a commercial vessels tied at the dock. Is it an intensification? If you go to page 13, under your regulations for the CM zone, it's only an increase if it results in 50% or more in the number of off-street parking. Well, we got two extra docks. Two extra docks does not increase the parking by 50%. So we believe that we fit the exemption of 24.1.1. So the five births, I might as well talk to you about that now, all are for commercial purposes. There's the barge, there's the shellplex, there's a transit slip, and an upweller, which I'm going to have to have Tim explain the upweller to you. He's explained it to me about 10 times, and I'm still not sure I understand it. Tim uses four of them, four of the five. One for his marine construction business, and that's been on the site historically long before zoning. One shellplex, that's where the tumbler is on. Two boats for shellfishing, which go out to the cages, and the fifth one is a commercial berth that is for fin fish, not shellfish. Again, these uses, we maintain, are pre-existing, non-conforming, except for the increase of the two births, but that was not an intensification under your regulations that would not trigger a site plan review. Argument number three, the tumbler is a tool of harvesting crops. And if you look on page 31, I've given you the statute. The statute begins on page 29, the very first statute of all the legislative acts, Title 1-1, words and phrases. What do words and phrases of the statute mean? And if you go to page 31, the words agriculture and farming shall include the raising or harvesting of oysters, and tools and equipment of raising, harvesting oysters, the handling, the packing, the packaging, the storing, or delivery to storage or to market, or to a carrier for transportation to market. That's what your statute, that's what the Connecticut statutes say about what is agriculture and what is farming. We believe there was no need for a coastal site plan review, because your regulations exempt the harvesting of crops, the activities for the specific purpose of preserving shellfish. If you go to page 35, look on page 35, your regulation, your regulation 14, 14.2, coastal site plan review exemptions, the very first one, A, and the harvesting of crops. And F, activities conducted for the specific purpose of conserving shellfish. You don't need coastal site plan review. That's what the tumbler was doing. Adding the operation of a tumbler, this farm equipment, to a shellplex does not alter the right of the shellplex to be birthed at the marina. It is a tool and equipment of farming, which is used in the raising of oysters, and as such, it is exempt. Argument number four, the tumbler was waterward of the mean high tideline, and therefore, the town has no jurisdiction beyond the high tideline out into the water. That's DEEP. That's the Commissioner of Agriculture. The only exception I have found is when activities out there have an impact on the land. If we got approval for, from DEEP for 200 slips, and we had no land for parking, that has an impact on the land. But if you look on page 27, I've given you the statute. The statute says that the following site plans and applications for activities or projects to be located fully or partially within the coastal boundary and landward of the mean high tide mark. Landward, this, the shellplex is out in the water. The tumbler is out in the water. That was our fourth argument. Our fifth argument revolved the Commissioner of Agriculture. The Commissioner of Agriculture informed the ZBA that after a siting inspection, and this is on page 23 to 26, if you were, 23, on 24, this was an advisory opinion, the Commissioner sent down people to visit the site, investigate the site, look at it, to find out if these operations were typical shellfish agriculture farms, and were engaged in it. And the conclusion from the Commissioner of Agriculture was that pre-h harvest activities consist of the planting, growing, drying, hauling, tumbling, and sorting of oysters. Post-h harvest activities required to prepare the shellfish for market include cleaning, culling, sorting, bagging, and transportation of the oysters. And on page 26, the Commissioner concluded, "It is my opinion that the activities being conducted by Niantic Bay Shellfish Farm," that is Tim Landrigan, "are standard agriculture, cultivation, and harvesting practices that are considered farming and agriculture as defined in the Connecticut law." We submitted that to the ZBA. We've heard that there are, that the town was concerned about noise. There were complaints from neighbors about noise, allegedly made to the town about the tumbler. So we looked into that. We responded to the noise complaint by pointing out on page 33 of the exhibits I gave you, Connecticut General Statute 19A 341. That statute says agricultural or farming operations not deemed a nuisance. And if you look under A, A2, what do they mean by that? Noise from, they say livestock, or farm equipment used in a normal, acceptable farming procedure. Noise from farm equipment used in the normal, generally acceptable farming procedure. That's by state statute. Second of all, this is a site plan, not a special use permit. Special use permits, you can put conditions on. This is a CAM for a permitted use, coastal area management for a permitted use. Now, I do want to tell you that Tim is trying to be a good neighbor. He sat down with his neighbor, and he discussed the times during the day that he tumbles. He also told him, if you have an event at your marina, if you have something going on, and you don't want the tumbler going, just give me a call. Just give me a call. He wants to be a good, good neighbor. Tim also checked with the Chairman of Agriculture for the town of East Line. And he was told today, and you can ask him about it, that there's no farm in East Line that has hours of operation restricted by the town. No town says to a farmer, "Well, you can only get up. You can't do anything at this time of the day or that time of the day." There's no authority for that. Besides, Tim has three girls under the age of six. He doesn't want to spend time at night and weekends. He just wants to come to work during the day. We also believe that the goals and policies of the Coastal Area Management Act do not mention noise. They mentioned coastal resources and the effects on coastal resources. They don't mention noise. So we see no need for any conditions as to the hours of operation. And besides all of that, we understand your town has a noise ordinance under its police power, not zoning power, police power. If you have a problem with noise, you go and enforce, you make a complaint under your noise ordinance. That's what it's there for. You don't have to get involved with noise. The town has a noise ordinance. So those were our, what did I say, six arguments as to the cease and desist, all of which we lost, and so we're in. we lost, and so we're in court on that. Now, let me discuss the injunction by the town. I told you that Tim received a certificate of permission to repair the bulkhead and the dredge material and de-watered the soils on-site for spreading on-site. And so, our argument to that was coastal area management site plan review was approved for this property in two thousand and eleven for dredging. Page one, it's difficult to read. I had to blow it up. I did it myself, somebody else probably could have done a better job. But this, if you see under approved, this was for, it was known as Bayview Landing at the time, dredging of basin area. So, that was approved back in two thousand and eleven. Now, there was some confusion whether or not there was a site plan at that time. As you will see on pages two, the town wrote to DEP saying that the local site plan had expired. Well, site plans only last for five, five years. But when we looked at the regul, at the minutes of that meeting where it was approved, if you look on page six, a question was asked if they will be filing a site plan after this CAM approval, and Mr. Mulholland stated it is just a CAM for now. Well, we checked, no site plan was ever filed in relation to that CAM approval. So, there was a CAM approval, but no site plan approval. So, site plans do expire within five years, but there never was a site plan. We believe that a CAM approval runs with the land, because there's no statute that puts a time limit on it. It runs with the land. That was our first argument. Our second argument was that coastal area management site plan may not be required for the repairing, repairing and replacing of an existing bulkhead pursuant to the certificate of permission granted by the state of Connecticut. If you go to page forty-three, section twenty-two A, coastal site plan review. When I read that, that statute, in the second line, it says a coastal site plan review has to be filed with the municipal zoning commission to aid in determining the conformity of a proposed structure. We're not proposing a structure. This was already in place. All we're doing is repairing it. And the certificate of permission was only for its repair and maintenance. So, we maintain that coastal site plans were not required for repairs to an existing structure. The town zoning regulations on thirty-five, which I pointed out before, under D, the town zoning regulations in your regulation, section fourteen, exempts certain uses from the requirements of a coastal site plan, modifications of existing on-premise, non-residential structures. So, we said, your own regulations, non-residential structure. That's what this is, a bulkhead. It's a non-residential structure. Argument number three, we went to. As for the installing and maintenance of an upland dewandering area for dredge material and the disposing of dredge material on the uplands and the storing of it, does not require coastal area management site plan because those areas are designed to preserve the soil and the coastal land and water, and the maintenance of the existing bulkhead is designed to preserve the soil and the coastal land. And on page thirty-five, that fourteen point two one F, F, activities conducted for the specific purpose of conserve, conserving or preserving soil, shellfish, and other coastal land. That's what we were doing, preserving coastal land. So, your regulations fourteen and three respects harvesting of crops, non-residential structures, activities to protect shellfish and coastal land. We felt that that applied. As I mentioned, all the dewatering materials were spread on the site, no materials were trucked off. Argument number four that we made is the Town of East Lime has not required a coastal site plan review, nor have they given an injunction for the repair of a previously approved shoreline flood and erosion control measure. And they didn't require a coastal site plan review when other people have gotten a certificate of permission from deep. If you go to page twenty-four-one, forty-one, we listed in our federal lawsuit what we believe similar work was performed at all of these addresses in the Town of East Lime without an injunction being filed against them, without them getting a site plan approval before they did the dredging. I'm not going to go through all of these. It's a page and a quarter. But our belief is that, well, that's why we filed this federal lawsuit for unequal treatment. These property owners dredged, de-watered, on-site, and did not get an injunction. So, this is the third lawsuit pending, or against the town. That's the background of the three lawsuits that we seek to settle with the approval of this site plan. Now, to explain the site plan, TJ, I got a call on you to kind of explain the site plan to them. I'm going to read off a list. Do you have a plan here? Is there a plan part of the record? There should be a plan part of the record. And do you have plans in front of the commissioners? They do. All right? So, the uses presently on the site, and they include the following uses. The marina use for boat slips, winter storage, hauling of boats, general service repair, retail marine store, bait and tackle, marine supplies. TJ, you told me once before, how many slips, how many slips do you have?
It's a hundred and ninety-eight.
Yeah, is that a hundred and ninety-eight? Ninety-eight, and I think that we said, but they, the plans are before you, whatever they are. That's the marina. That's the business. There's a retail store, and within the retail store, it's always been a marine store of some type, and they sold merchandise. It's under a thousand square feet, so it qualifies as a farm store. We have sold oysters, bagged oysters, packaged oysters from that store, and it's a typical marine store within the existing building, nothing was added, added on to it. And so, there's a crane on-site. The crane on-site is for the marina use, and that marina, that crane operation, that construction business is a pre-existing, non-conforming use. And the marine construction business operated from this site, and it requires the stockpiling of timber, material to load onto the barge for the construction of docks and the seawalls, which are located elsewhere. He goes out and does the seawalls and the dredging elsewhere, which is why he knows some of these other places had the same, similar work done. And so, he's put on the site plan where that activity is going to take place. There's no change in the buildings, there's no intensification of use, other than those two slips, which I went over before, doesn't qualify under your regulations. It needs just a business registration form. Tim was negligent in not getting a business registration form immediately upon Nyanic Bay Shellfish Farm starting, but you have done that since, right? And so, the other business registration forms are current. We paid the registration fee. And that's where NVSF goes out into the oyster beds in the bay, brings the oysters back to the dock on the shellplex and the barge where they're packaged. Culling of them takes place, bagging of oysters, tumbling, drying of them is complete. We have moved that shellplex with the tumbler from the row of slips going out into the water to the eastern part, farthest away, that we could put it on our property. Is that correct? And that's where the tumbler's going to be located on the shellplex. Again, our neighbors didn't want to hear the noise, we moved it farther away. And all this activity constitutes the harvesting of crops, and we have shown where that's going to take place on, on the site plan. So, you ask, they ask, why, why are you here? Well, I told you that Tim Laundergan's involved in three lawsuits. As interesting as I find these lawsuits, as interesting as they are, Tim has to make a business decision. As the expenses of litigation mount, he has to weigh the cost against what it may take to settle with the town. The town wants a site plan. More importantly, Tim has expressed to me that he wants to be a good business for the town. He realizes that he is the gateway to the village of Nyanic from the east. He knows he has an important piece of property. He wants to be a good businessman, and he wants to do it for the town. He wants to be good employer for the town. The town officials have stated that this site plan, if it is approved, will settle all three of these cases. It will resolve the ZBA appeal and thus the cease and desist order. The town will stop its injunction action, and Tim will drop his federal lawsuit and be permitted to continue operating his business going forward. So, Tim had a choice. He could put his money into his business rather than lawyers, and he chose to put it into his business. The town wants a site plan on file and approved by the town. I believe the town has reviewed the site plan. They haven't given us any, any comments about non-compliance of that site plan, and we have agreed to do this with this filing, so we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Does attorney, please still have any comments?
For your record, I'm Tim Blusa from the town attorney's office. I'm a lawyer and a litigator, and I'm going to exercise an awful lot of restraint not to respond to a lot of what Attorney Laundergan said, but I agree with everything that he said there at the end, that, you know, we're, part of the reason we're here tonight is the town is attempting to settle three different lawsuits. The type of application that you have before you tonight is a coastal site plan review under the Coastal Management Act. And what I think the commission should know about that, and just, it's a helpful reminder to have this in your record, is that the act is focused on protecting coastal resources and water-dependent development and activities, things that have to be located next to the water to be able to occur. A big part of this act is protecting water-dependent uses from being pushed out by non-water-dependent uses, and it's simply a recognition of the fact that there's a limited amount of coastline on which you can put water-dependent uses. So, what you should take away from that is everything that's being proposed tonight by the applicant is, involves water-dependent uses. And those, those essentially, you know, sort of receive kind of a, almost deferential treatment under the act. Those are the sorts of things that the act is designed to kind of protect and make sure that they're allowed to locate on the coastline and not be displaced by a soccer field or something that is taking up, you know, coastal land without actually needing to be located next to the water. When you're faced with a application like this, that's seeking approval for water-dependent use in this area, and it's a use that's otherwise prohibited under your regulations, that act limits the commission's ability to deny the application. You basically need to be able to make findings supported by evidence in your record that indicate that the proposed use is going to have an adverse effect on water-dependent uses or coastal resources. And here, the commission's own regulations have identified, you know, for instance, one of their, their proposed uses is a commercial, a birthing facility for a commercial shellfishing vessel. Your regulations have allowed that in the zone, as best I can tell, for as long as the zone has existed. And that represents a judgment by this commission that it's an appropriate use in that area. You heard a lot of commentary about how these, this application is going to resolve these three lawsuits, and the town agrees with that completely. You know, Attorney Laundergan talked a lot about how certain pieces of these are responding directly to enforcement actions taken by the town. So, in that sense, it's a retroactive application on those pieces. It's not unusual to resolve zoning compliance issues this way. You know, in my own private citizen life, I'm on the water for planning a zoning commission, I have been for about five years, and we settle litigation like this from time to time. So, it's not unusual to be in this position for your, for your commission. But as they say, you know, if the commission were to approve this application tonight, it would resolve those three lawsuits. The application that's before you went through about ten months of kind of off and on again negotiation between the town, the applicant, and the lawyers. And I think it's important for you to know that so that you understand that it's, it's gone through scrutiny before it landed on your desk tonight. Everything that's proposed in the application, you know, Bill and I have reviewed this, it's all permitted uses in this zone, and where a deep review by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection was required, the applicant did that, as you heard, back in two thousand and nineteen. This morning, I visited your office and dropped off copies of the record from that COP. So, I'm not sure if it's in the stack in front of you or if it's in Bill's box here, but the commission does have that record, so that you do have a clear record that where the deep approval was required, they have that. So, that's not an issue. Why the application is before you, if you were to look at section ten point one, which is the, the list of permitted uses for the CM district where this is located, you know, one of the expressly permitted uses is a birthing facility for vessels engaged in commercial fishery or shellfishery. But the very beginning part of that section says that those permitted uses are permitted subject to site plan approval, and that's why the town took that position, so that the regulations say a site plan is required for that use. And so, that's why that position was taken, and we're happy to see a site plan tonight. Regarding the second lawsuit, which involved some of the work that was permitted by deep, the town took the position that this sort of review was required, in part because the terms of that, that permit itself from deep, did expressly say that where local review was required, the applicant was required to go do it. And so, that's why we took that position, and again, we're happy to see this, this application here tonight and excited that it has the potential to resolve these lawsuits. So, as Attorney Laundergan mentioned, the town attorney's office did submit a letter, we filed it this morning, so you have that in your record, and I think it's in the packet before you. And it essentially makes two recommendations to the commission. The top-line recommendation is sort of what I've been saying, that if, if this commission looks at this application and determines that it complies with the application requirements, you know, it's clear that this is a permitted use, and the town attorney's recommendation would be that it be approved. And we feel confident in making that recommendation to you based on, in part, the, the process that this application went through before it landed on your desk, having your professional staff, Bill Mulholland, review it, having the town attorney's office review it, having the back and forth between the applicant's team and us. And so, that's why we feel confident in recommending that to you tonight. The second recommendation that it makes concerns this issue of shellfish processing, which you've heard about in this tumbler machine. Section ten point one point one nine of the regulations, which permit the birthing of commercial shellfishing vessels, expressly prohibits or excludes shellfish processing plants. There's There's a little bit of a difficulty because your regulations don't define what a shellfish processing plant is, which makes it difficult to administer the regulations and engage when someone is complying. And so that's a question that we, you know, have attempted to engage with the applicant on. And, you know, as they mentioned, they had received this letter from the Department of Agriculture, a determination about the status of that tumbler. And we've reviewed that now. And it's our recommendation based on that that we follow the determination that the Department of Agriculture has issued. And the reason for that is the Department of Agriculture is authoritative on this subject. It's the state agency that has jurisdiction over aquaculture. And as they said, this is not, the state agency didn't just opine from on high up in Hartford. They actually sent folks down here to look at what was going on, to talk to the applicant about his operations, to look at the equipment. And based on that and their review of the state statutes and regulations that they administer, you know, they determined that, under Connecticut law, this tumbler is not a shellfish processing plant but rather a piece of agricultural equipment. And you can kind of think of it as sort of an intermediate step in the agricultural process. So maybe something akin to, you know, a farmer going out and mowing hay, fertilizing his crops, something that is happening along the way in agriculture but is short of the process that it's going through to put it onto the market, whatever the product is. And so we recommend that you follow that determination for the Department of Agriculture. The Coastal Management Act does require that the commission make certain findings when it's deciding this type of application. And so I had some discussions with Bill today. And the Town Attorney's Office has prepared some example or proposed motions that you could consider to help you work your way through that. So I will pass those down right now. So as you'll see in the suggested motions, there's two different motions on here. And certainly, the commission's not bound to this. You're able to formulate your own motion. But the findings 1 through 4 that we've listed here are findings that are necessary under the act and the regulations. So those should be a part of whatever motion the commission makes if it's a motion to approve. The first motion is just a straight approval of the application as it's filed. And the second motion is one that would impose one condition. And it sounds like it may be a condition that the applicant would accept. As Attorney Laundergan pointed out, the town of Eastlime has a noise ordinance. And I have copies of that for all of you.
I have it. I got it. Exhibit C.
As I said, the town of Eastlime has a noise ordinance. You have it in front of you. It's something that the entire town is subject to. And they would be subject to whether it's part of your motion to approve or not as a condition. However, there are advantages to adding it to, as a condition of approval, if that was something the commission desired to do in response to these noise concerns. And the main benefit is that compliance with that ordinance then also becomes a zoning enforcement matter. And it gives the town more flexibility in terms of how it would handle a noise problem if one were to occur in the future. The other advantage to it is the ordinance sets out clear decibel levels that are allowable during certain hours, things like that. And it's an ordinance that applies 24/7. So I think that, if the commission is interested in something like that, that might be an appropriate way to proceed. And in terms of whether or not you have authority to do that, I would just add that the Coastal Management Act, specifically Section 22A-105E, does give the commission authority to modify an application on approval. But you have to be able to say that your modification is related to controlling an adverse impact on water-dependent uses of coastal resources. I don't think that complying with the noise ordinance, if that was interesting to the commission, would be a problem. My recollection is that the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Laundergan presented evidence about the decibel readings from the tumbler and other, you know, areas, activities down in that area of Nyantic. And my recollection is that the evidence he showed was that his operations generally comply with that noise ordinance. So to the extent that it were to get louder, this condition would allow you to use the noise ordinance. But again, you know, it's up to the commission how you craft your motion. These are just some examples. I was asked for examples of what you might do. And that is what the Town Attorney's Office prepared. We did not prepare an example motion for denying the application in part because it didn't seem appropriate under these circumstances, particularly where the proposal is for a water-dependent activity and it's a permitted use in that zone. So are there any questions from the commission about the motions or the Town Attorney letter?
I'm assuming that there isn't going to be any overnight tumbling, that it would be mostly during business hours. Is that a correct assumption?
So I will let the applicant answer that. Or is it Attorney's?
Presently, the tumbler takes place during business hours. May I respond?
Yes.
Thank you. We would be opposed to this second motion adding this reference to the noise ordinance. You might as well put on every one of your approvals and subject to every law in the town of Eastlime and every ordinance in the town of Eastlime. Why don't you put that on all of your decisions? It's redundant. It's not necessary. Just because somebody makes a complaint, "Oh, then I heard the noise while I'm sitting on my boat, and it bothers me." You're going to put this condition on now? I've looked at the CAM reviews. And if you look at the CAM, the policies, 22A-92, 22A-92B, I've looked at, I've looked at all of them, 22A-106C, I don't see anything in there about noise. How does noise affect the coastal resource? Coastal resources? It doesn't. I mean, I see absolutely no need to add this additional condition. We've come a long, long way over the last four years of litigation to now throw in, oh, noise because of a neighbor's complaint. The coastal area management policies make no mention of noise, no mention of it being a criteria. The town has its police powers. I respect that. We know that. And 92A-106 defers to the policies and goals of 22A-92, and that is to give the highest priority and preference to water-dependent uses, including commercial fishing uses. That is what the Coastal Area Management Act says. Highest priority. Now you want to put a condition on it? "Oh, but if it's too noisy, you can't do it." That's not what the coastal area management says. Thank you.
Yes. Bill, could you please speak up? Because people say they can't hear you.
As of now. I can't tell you if a hurricane comes through here or a nor'easter comes through here that the animals have to be taken out of their cage or something. So I can't make that commitment to you.
That was my question. I'm going to be here.
Well, sunrise to sunset. You want to do that?
And you consider...
Yeah, but in the wintertime, it's longer. Because sunset would be at 4:00. So it's the flip answer, but it could be longer.
Does the weekend have the same business hours as weekdays usually for you?
I would say, no, they're shorter. Shorter. Shorter on the weekends. But are you really going to get in to that issue of noise and operation? Have you ever done that on any coastal site plan?
I would just add that the reason we prepared, the Town Attorney's Office prepared the second motion with a possible condition was that we were asked to. And one of the reasons we were asked to was that, over the course of the history of this matter, there have been, what I would say, are informal complaints from neighbors who are other water-dependent uses, other neighboring marinas, for the most part, is where those complaints have come from. However, I would also note, for your benefit, that the folks who have made informal complaints have never filed a formal written complaint on any of these issues. And, you know, for that matter, the fact that this is a permitted use under the regulations is something that could have changed at any time in the past four years. If neighbors were concerned about an operation like this being next to them, they could have come in and applied to the commission to change the regulations and eliminate that as a use. So I think we prepared it because it was requested of us, and it was responding to a concern that is out there in the community. But I think you can judge for yourselves the level of that concern based on the fact that no formal written complaint was ever made on this, and no one has ever attempted to try to change these regulations to remove these, these commercial uses that they were bothered by. So for what that's worth, I just would add that for you.
You said it was redundant. You said the ordinance is the ordinance, so it's redundant. How do you respond to that?
Well, that's where I was saying that the advantage to it is it gives the town flexibility in how you enforce it. Because if you incorporate it into the approval you give here on the site plan, a violation of the ordinance then could also be treated as a zoning violation. And the town has, there's separate statutory authority for the town to bring enforcement actions, which we've used in this case. We use, Bill and I routinely use them to enforce the zoning regulations in the town of Eastlime. And it just gives the town more flexibility. It's not necessarily necessary, but it is an option you have.
Because otherwise, you would just be fined against the current ordinance. Otherwise, you would just be fined. This could have zoning implications, is what you're saying, by putting that clause in.
Right. It's just a different way to go about enforcing it.
So if we approved it without the bottom line, noise emitted, does that negate the fact that they still have to comply with the town's noise ordinance?
No, no.
So they would still have to, whether we put that clause in there or not?
That's right. And it's just about whether the town wants additional flexibility.
A couple of questions. Has the neighboring, the neighbor who was complaining, have they come before you, Bill, with any suggestions?
It's all been what?
Informal. So you've had no written report of current...
So there's no suggestions on the neighbor's part about conditions of any approval?
Okay. Yeah, if I could just respond to that real quick. I have spoken to an attorney that represents some neighbors, certainly not all of the neighbors. And, you know, one of the things that I think the neighbors were interested in seeing happen is having the commercial shell fishing operation move as far away from the neighboring marinas as possible. And the applicant's done that. They've moved to the extreme southeast corner. So that was one thing that they were interested and is, in fact, happening. You know, I think there was interest from the neighbors to have, you know, hours of operation imposed on this. But, you know, for the reasons that I was saying, I think if you are interested in imposing a condition related to noise, it's better to tie it into the existing noise ordinance. In part, too, because what the noise ordinance does is it applies to the entire property, not just one piece of equipment on the property. And so it kind of gives you better coverage, too, rather than just saying, "You can only run this one piece of machinery between the hours of 9 and 5." So that's one piece of it. And I believe there was another concern, but my recollection is that it was, it's addressed by the application that's before you.
Just as a comment, I'm never going to try to argue with Attorney Laundergan about all the points that he made, which I respect. But one thing that we fall back on, as you know, is in our regulations, we are charged with stabilizing and conserving the value of land, homes, and other buildings. And that's what this is all about. The neighbor has complained. The neighbor is, as I understand, is, has gotten complaints from their customers, the boat owners. And yeah, personally, I'm totally in favor of commercial marine operations. It's always been there since prehistory. But we are charged with this. And I was going to suggest some time constraints. But if you say the noise ordinance will do the job, then hopefully, that'll take care of it. But there were some serious, these boat owners were threatening to leave. And that's devaluation of property.
That's a good point. Yeah, I'm sure either of the attorneys, Laundergan, could speak to this because they're both very experienced land use lawyers as well. But, you know, that's always a tension in land use is that the regulations permit certain things. And in this case, permit a birthing facility for a commercial shell fishing vessel. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it's completely innocuous to neighbors. And if a neighbor has a complaint, they have their own private rights to pursue nuisance actions and things like that if they feel it's appropriate. So it's a good point that you're making. It's one of those, you know, tensions at the limits of land use law. But I'll let Attorney Laundergan comment if he has anything else.
Thank you. Mr. Peck, I would ask that you state for the record who contacted you and told you about these restrictions that they want in. Will you please state the name for the record?
Nobody contacted me about any restrictions. I just, it's hearsay, really.
Well, who did you hear it from?
I don't remember, but...
Can anybody? Mr. Mahaland, who are these people that are complaining? Can you name the marina? So nobody wants to name the person who has contacted the town informally, made these complaints about noise that all of a sudden finds itself as a condition of approval before this commission?
I can tell you that I've heard it indirectly from the owner of the neighbor.
Who is the neighbor? Which neighbor? What neighbor?
Boats Incorporated.
Boats Incorporated. So it's Boats Inc.?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I wanted to know. It's all Boats Inc.
Indirectly from that source, yeah.
Okay. All right.
I know a lot of boat owners, you know.
So I just wanted to keep in mind that this is a coastal area management review for a permitted use, not a special use where you get to put all the conditions you want on. This is a permitted use. Have you on a permitted use put conditions? I don't think so. I didn't even look, but I'll bet you never did for a permitted use. Put conditions? You put them on special use purposes?
On a site plan, we have conditions.
Oh, conditions of the site plan.
That's what we're doing here.
Now, this is for noise. This is a noise, Mr. Peck. This is noise ordinance that you're doing. And if you put it on there, maybe there's a defense if you bring it under your zoning powers to say, "Hey, wait a minute. I don't think you had the authority under your zoning because you did it by the police power. You didn't do it by the zoning power." You didn't do it by the zoning power. But I'll leave it to your good judgment whether or not you want to add, after all this time and effort and money to settle this, these matters, to add a noise restriction. I will leave it to your good judgment.
Any other discussion before we vote?
Anybody?
Does someone want to make a motion?
I think that we have taken a lot of time to get where we are today, and I think it would be a shame to walk away with a lot of demands because I, there may be neighborhood concerns, but it sounds to me like it would be a police matter. And I think it's important that we get this accomplished. This business is good for town, for the town, just like all businesses are. And that's my comment.
And I also believe with Commissioner Markovitz, Mr. Landergan has stated that he has met with the neighbors, is willing to work with them. He has moved it, I was on ZBA when it was initially there, and it was, and for the public hearings, and it was the noise. And so the actual location of the Tumblr has been moved, which I think that that was the biggest problem, was the noise. So I think that it is really good. We know for a fact how good Mr. Landergan is with coastal resources, what his beliefs are, what he has stated. And also too, I believe that there was something that was discussed with the decibel when you did that. Do you remember what it was, Mr. Landergan? I don't think it was, didn't even like reach to that point where it was even a complaint type of issue, correct?
It was. Mr. Landergan did it himself with his own meter. It wasn't done by a civil engineer. I don't want to give that impression to you.
Oh, okay.
But he felt comfortable that it was well below.
Okay. I do remember the several public hearings though, that mostly it was the area of where it was. So now that it's been moved, I think that it's really good. And I think that it's a police issue. If it tends to get noisy or whatever, I would like to think that the residents could come to Mr. Landergan and talk to them and figure, you know, a thing out, or they could call the police. I think it's a very good compromise.
I would concur for the most part. For the record, I was at a slip very close proximity to this location. My boat has been since moved to a different marina for a totally different reason. But the complaint was not only noise, it was the odor emitted. And there are many, many occupants of the dock that I was on that come down from out of state, they leave a lot of money in this town, and they spend the weekends on their boat. And a lot of them found it troublesome to enjoy a decent night's sleep on their boat because of activities. I know that it's been moved farther away, and I applaud that. That may solve the problem, but it was always a concern. Can I give you their names? No. Because up and down the dock, we refer to people by nicknames and first names. I don't know half of the members of the dock that I was on, nor the one that I'm on now, farther up the river. But it was both. And if this addresses the noise and the odors, then I'm comfortable with it.
And there's no chance you'll be moving it back?
It's on the site plan. That's why we put it on the site plan. That's where it's going.
Going to stay, okay.
I will make a motion if we're ready.
Okay.
A move that the commission find, that the application is for a permitted subject to coastal site plan approval pursuant to section 10.
Mr. Peck, if I may, if you could read the header off of the agenda and then...
Okay. In regards to application 2023 CAM-01, marker seven marina, 111-109 Main Street, Nyanic, for municipal coastal site plan review. I move that the commission find that the applicant is for use permitted subject coastal site plan approval pursuant to section 10 and section 14 of the East Lime zoning regulations. Two, the application conforms to the requirements of the East Lime zoning regulations. Three, the application is consistent with the coastal management policies of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act and section 14 of the East Lime zoning regulations. Four, the application is conditioned, as conditioned, incorporates all reasonable measures which would mitigate any adverse impacts on both coastal resources and future water-dependent development activities. And that the commission approve with modifications the application with the following condition. One, the noise emitted by the marina comply with the East Lime noise control ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Congratulations, Mr. Landergan.
We'll discuss it. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, just FYI, the Holmes Road Affordable Housing will be on the July 6th agenda. Attorney Carey is currently preparing resolutions for that. So we'll move on to all business, which there is none. New business. We have erection for an alternate. We have a vacancy for an alternate. Since several of us haven't met some of the people applying, if anyone wants to stand up and tell us your name and why you're interested or whatever, let's take time to do that if you so desire. I don't even know who's who, so... Okay, sure. Do you want to step up and state your name and address, please?
My name is Mark Peterson. I live at 3 Red Fox Road. I was born and raised in town. I have two children in the East Lime school system. I'm currently retired from the state of Connecticut. I am a mortgage lender. My office is right by Dairy Queen over here. And that's it. I'm vested in the town. I've been here my whole life, and I plan on staying.
Thank you.
My name's Chris Herman. I live at 26 North Main Street, Nyanic. I reside there with my wife 32 years. I run a small construction company since 1997. Work mostly with environmental work, fire remediations, things like that. Like to give back to the community. Been involved at our previous residence with all kinds of social groups, and Little League and Board of Directors, things like that. And I would just like to give back to the community.
Thank you.
And what's your name, please?
Chris Herman, 26 North Main Street.
Thank you.
H-E-R. Kind of like the...
Is there anyone else here interested tonight that wanted to introduce themselves? No? So just, we need four votes in favor of either one tonight. If we don't have four, it goes to, we keep voting. Mr. Blaisdell said we can keep voting till we get someone. If we don't, it will go to the Board of Selectmen. Yeah. Yeah, does anyone have a motion?
I would like to make a motion for Mr. Herman because he had sent in an email into Chairman, Chairperson Thurlow.
A text, yeah.
A text, I'm sorry. And he has quite extensive construction, commercial, residential. He's been involved in a lot of projects, so he understands like zoning issues, it is seen from what he had passed on to Ms. Thurlow. So I think that he would be a good candidate for an alternate, knowing that he has a strong background in construction and things like that.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I voted for him. Oh, you're voting. Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's 3-3.
Who, I thought... No, who is four?
Norm, Norm Devi and Denise.
And John.
No, I was again.
Oh, he was again, so I'm sorry.
Okay, do we have another nomination?
Wait a minute. Excuse me. We have a tie vote?
Yes.
Doesn't a tie vote on a motion mean approval? No?
The opposite.
The opposite, okay.
Norm Devi and Denise. Do we have any other motions?
I would nominate Mark Peterson.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Well, we can revote, or it can go to the Board of Selectmen.
I suggested go to the Board of Selectmen. Do I need to make a motion?
I mean, it will just go, we don't need a motion for it to go to the Board of Selectmen.
How about a revote?
We can do that.
Let's do that.
Okay, do we have another motion?
I make a motion that we vote for Chris Herman for the alternate position due to his extensive experience and what we do on zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I haven't, I've only heard four ayes. That would be a good idea. For which? Opposed or for?
Okay, do we have another motion?
I nominate Mark Peterson.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise their hands for aye. Four. It passed.
No, it's not four, it's three.
No.
Oh, Norm raises him.
So opposed? Abstained. Congratulations, Mr. Peterson. And thank you so much, Mr. Herman, for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
We appreciate your interest and come again. Okay, moving on, is there any business on the floor that a majority of us want to talk about tonight? Nope? Okay, zoning official, Mr. Mahoney.
If you're still busy, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Six. Okay. Our ex officio is not here tonight.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
How are we coming with the stop and shop buffer?
Attorney Sweeney and I have been in discussion. He's now representing those in the case of Attorney Harrison, who actually served for the retired. We've had some discussions, and they are looking for additional things, and they may have a user that may require a visit. There's a vacancy, so all those things are going to offer fully Irish in the trees. He's addressing that with the owner, and he will be a little smaller, at least, shorter.
Mr. Mahoney, how long has this been going on about the buffer and the trees, and they've been asked to...
When are we going to stop talking about it?
I agree with Mr. Peck on this.
Attorney Sweeney and I have been in a meeting, and they failed to comply with the probability of the, which is a formulary issue. That's what it says.
The whole area looks like the moon at the moment.
Yes, it does.
And any tree that we can save might help.
It's starting to look like Kansas.
We're still...
So more issues with the state and the tree line, the forest, and stuff. If they're going to feather down their flaring lines, and they're going to have to cut about half of the trees there, it's probably a particular issue that they may be saying. So we agree, I don't think any of the screeners disagree, that it does look like the moon out that way. We're battling to save every tree we can. But I will look, Attorney Sweeney will be, I mean, you will come to talk to her if you need to, the trees.
Well, I do agree with Mr. Peck that I feel like this has gone on quite a long time, and if we don't make a move on something now, then it's going to be too late.
They have.
I haven't noticed that.
I drive by every day, but...
Before the next meeting, I will invite Mr. Sweeney to explain himself.
So you're going to invite him to the next July meeting?
Okay. Any other questions for Bill? No? Did anyone get to the planning meeting this past month?
I did.
Awesome.
Nancy Kalal, who was here earlier tonight, was also there at the planning meeting addressing the concerns about the easement on Kensington through Darryl Road, and she submitted exhibits to them as well. Also, Attorney Garrity was there, representing Kristen Clark and Shelley Harney, the Portside Holdings. It's a five-lit subdivision on 12 acres on Upper Walnut Hill and Holmes Road. I believe that's adjacent to the thing that's come before us. They're waiting for an inland wetlands to have a public hearing, and then they're going to vote on it at their next meeting. Gary Geichel did discuss that the new P-O-C-D does not specify areas where affordable housing is recommended. And they're going to take a look at that again and see what they can do about that. They're also revamping some of their regs to include revisions on plan checklists and final, final plan checklist, looking toward the day when all of these applications are going to be submitted electronically, which I guess is coming up at some point soon. And that is that.
And I would like to thank Denise Markovitz for attending the meeting because it was, in fact, my turn. And, sorry, thank you very much.
No, it wasn't. I thought I was switched with you.
I switched for May and June, and so thank you very much. I appreciate that, Denise. Thank you.
My son is on planning, so I could visit with him.
Good, thank you. Sorry about that.
And for the July 18th planning meeting, can Mr. Peck still attend?
Is there a July 18th planning meeting?
That's what our schedule says. Do you think they canceled it?
No, I think, are we down to one meeting in July and August? Yeah?
Yes.
Let me check the planning before you go.
Okay. Forget what I said.
Okay. In your folder tonight, we included some correspondence we received from the public. It's in the back of your packet. And also, I guess that's it for tonight. We're leaving early. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourn. Thank you, everybody.